Must be seven o'clock.
It must be seven o'clock. Welcome to the August 12th Tulare County Board of Supervisors Meetings. Would you please stand with me as we pledge the flag of our country. It will be led by Supervisor Vanderpoel and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
Hi, voters of the citizens who live in the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation of God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This afternoon at 3:00 PM, the Board of Supervisors did meet in closed session and we did conclude our closed session at approximately 6:00 PM. This time I'd like to welcome City of Tulare, City Manager Don Dorman forward and Skip Barwick if you would like to say a few words. We'd be glad to hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable members of Board of Supervisors and the speaking staff. We're just so delighted to have you here tonight and on behalf of the City Council and the Board of Public Utilities who ordinarily sit in the seats that you're in when they hold session, as well as the citizens of Tulare, I welcome you to our chambers. We're happy to have you and just so pleased that you're coming to do some business in our town and I know it's a great opportunity for the citizens to see what the little Ohio of government does in our county. So we're delighted to have you. If you need anything, please let us know and we hope you enjoy your visit in our chambers.
I'd like a chair a little bit taller.
Don, do you guys have any bottled water by any chance? I'm curious.
I just want to support what he said. We're glad to have you here, glad to have you utilize these chambers. You've got a pretty good turnout tonight, a little better than we do, so I hope it turns out good, but again, thank you very much for joining us. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you very much. We'll now take up our agenda. The first item is our Board of Supervisor matters. We'll start with Supervisor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, we had a conference call with the Corps of Engineers with Glenn Reed, Kyle Lombardi always sits in on that, Kevin McCarthy's office, Teddy Vaughn, Bolo Ladrikis from City of Porterville along with John Lawless and then Dick Schaper. So we kind of went over what the SOB Committee is talking about doing. We still have nothing in concrete, so we really can't make an announcement on where our DSAC rating is. It's leaning towards a DSAC 3, which we continue to take the restrictions off the success dam so that we can fill up to capacity. And so we're waiting probably till latter part of next month before we'll know which way that direction is going. Last Saturday, I was at the Indian Reservation. We had a step-up back-to-school meeting for all the children from the reservation. They came in and we had resources there, different departments from the county were there, the City of Porterville was there, and giving out different things to people and information as they start back to school, whether it be health or whatever they need. It was a good turnout. I helped the Porterville PD and the sheriff with the food and it was kind of, it was fun getting together with everybody up there and working together to put the food out. This morning, we went out to East Porterville. We finally got in place our 5,000-gallon tank for the folks out there that have lost their wells. We know we've got at least 100 homes without wells out there because most of them are on sand points, which are only 20 feet deep, and we're finding people out in that area at 60, 70, 80 feet, the wells going dry. And it's not just East Porterville, it's all over the county, wells going dry. So it's a big problem, the drought. Hopefully, that tank out there will help folks with their daily needs. We've got bottled water, got a lot of people donate bottled water to them, but this water will be to flush their toilets, to bathe with, and just kind of their daily use, they can't drink it. But we continue to work on this, we continue to have our drought meetings and our drought task force and trying to come up with ways and trying to look for grants or look for money for folks that's wells gone dry. You know, if you're a disadvantaged community or if you've got contaminated water, there's money out there for you. But if you're just a homeowner with a well, there's no money. So we'll continue as a county to work to try to find ways to help those folks. There are people out there that will drill the wells if you can get the resources, so we'll continue on that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Sheedah.
Last Tuesday, we had a meeting sponsored by the state pesticide regulators and we met at the ag commissioner's office and it was a two-day meeting mainly talking about land planning and how pesticides farming interacts with urban growth. Probably one of the issues that came up was really important is about the location of schools. And schools are economists from land use regulations by counties and cities, so they locate basically where they want to locate and they usually locate out of the city, outside of the city limits. And then they're building schools in agricultural properties so you can't have a potential conflict between our right to farm in Tulare County versus the school districts. The second thing that, well, the second thing that happens is the fact that these kids walk to school, some of them, and there aren't any sidewalks and the roads aren't very safe for them to walk on. So that creates an additional development problem. Thirdly, whenever you build a school, it invites development and residential development usually falls right behind schools and the residential development infills back toward the city limits or a town. Obviously, today and tomorrow, the state legislature and the governor's writing over a water bond. The governor came out at $6 billion, which is substantially less than we feel is necessary for a municipal water bond to address the water needs in the state of California, but they have two days to come up with a plan with a bill that the governor will sign. If not, the original water bond for over $11 billion will go on the ballot. This afternoon, I spent time with the Valley PBS station, the radio station, and we had some people come in from San Francisco. They wanted to know about the effects of drought on the citrus industry. So we took a drive around, we showed them the orchards that have been taken out, we showed them orchards that are dying, and I guess the bonus they got since some of them are from San Francisco was they got to see an orchard that had been taken out and was stacked and we had a grinder in the field grinding the trees and that material goes into co-generation facilities to generate electricity. Tomorrow morning, I get the pleasure of leaving at 5:00 in the morning to attend a rural supervisors' meeting in Sacramento and that's all I have.
Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I missed our last meeting in the last week of July. I was with, at the request of the city of Visalia, I was back in Washington DC, working the senate chambers, trying to get legislation passed to modify the Affordable Care Act to preserve 700 jobs in Visalia. Cigna Insurance Company sells policies to expatriates, Americans who are working outside of the country. Under the Affordable Care Act, as it now stands, they have to sell policies that are comparable to the ones sold in this country, which puts them at a significant disadvantage, the end result of which is if this is not resolved favorably to them, they will be closing, they're planning closing their operation in Visalia, which would be 700 jobs and 500 jobs in Delaware and another 50 jobs in Florida. So it was a very quick meeting. We won't know the results of it for a while because Congress is out of session right now, they're on vacation. So anyway, hopefully we will be successful. Last Monday, the board met with the Tulai Indian Tribe at the reservation. We had a tour of their new courthouse, law enforcement center, a really very nice facility. It was a good meeting with the tribe and we're trying to do this on an annual basis to improve our relations with the only other nation that operates out of Tulare County. Big news in District 4 was that we've had a water problem like Mr. Ennis pointed out throughout the county. In Seville, the problem there, we do have a system, it's a very poor quality system, but our old well was only producing 55 gallons of water per minute for a community of about 400 people, which is just inadequate water supply. So thanks to the good work of Mike Bonds and the state of California, we were able to really move quickly, which is very unusual working with a state, and we've got a driller to come in very quickly, which is also very difficult to handle right now, and drilled a well. And that well was drilled to 300 feet. Just found out we'll probably have that well online Thursday or Friday of this week, which will be a great improvement for the water quantity. We don't know what the quality yet, hopefully the quality will be good too, but certainly from a quantity standpoint, it'll be a big help to that community. And that's all I have to say this evening. Thank you.
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right, well, first of all, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Chairman, for continuing the evening meeting series and where we take our meetings throughout the county. It's great to be here in the city that I represent, the best city in Tulare County, and that's the city of Tulare. Obviously, everyone can look around and see that the facilities here are fantastic. Kudos to the city of Tulare for pursuing and making this project a reality. I now see why it's such a pleasure to serve on the city council in the city. Just want to go over a couple of things. First of all, on upcoming, the next Friday, the 22nd of August, there will be a San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority meeting, of which the city of Tulare and its employees are a part of, to adopt rates for the upcoming plan year. Our rates continue to beat the trend of rate increases of health insurance in the industry for comparable plans and even in the private sector. This group does very well as a JPA of, originally founded by two counties and several governmental entities. We're able to provide insurance at a much lower cost because we have fixed the small portion of fixed costs that we were able to by consolidating and coming together. So hopefully, we will have either flat rates or maybe rates that will just slightly increase for the next year. Also, that Saturday, August 23rd, there will be a summer jubilee fundraiser at the residence of Dr. Kumar and Dr. Gupta. That will be at 6:00 PM to raise money for the Tulare Hospital Foundation. That should be a great event, it always is, attended by residents from throughout the county and obviously various restaurants and vendors participate and it's really a joy to attend and support a great local organization. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Tomorrow morning, we'll attend a retirement board meeting on behalf of this board. By way of announcements, there will be no Board of Supervisors meeting next Tuesday, so we will be dark next Tuesday. Next Monday at 3:00 PM, there will be a joint meeting of the Agriculture Advisory Policy Committee as well as the Water Commission, and that meeting will be again at 3:00 PM at the Board of Supervisory Office.
3:30.
3:30, I stand corrected. By way of announcement, on Friday, late Friday evening, we received notice that the county was successful in its efforts to receive a grant for water in partnership with the Tulare County Office of Education. We received a million-dollar grant. We will be working with the Tulare County Office of Education to distribute water to unincorporated communities directly to schools. So we'll be providing water to the schoolchildren where they either have water issues, contaminated water, or no water. So I wanted to announce that, that's pretty exciting. Originally, we were going to ask for $250,000. The state encouraged us to apply for a million dollars and so we did apply for a million dollars jointly with the Office of Education. We're successful, so great news. Again, moving at lightning speed. Typically, these things take months and this actually took a couple of weeks. We're very successful. Again, we want to thank our staff that worked so hard on that. We had staff working on that until the evening many times, so thank you. That concludes the Board of Supervisors matters. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I forgot one item. Last Friday, I requested a meeting with Senator Feinstein on behalf of the eight Valley Counties to talk about the stalled bills in the Senate and the House about drought relief for California. So I haven't heard back. We have a commitment by all eight county boards of supervisors, one member from each board would be willing to meet with the senator anywhere, anytime, and we're waiting to hear back.
Thank you. We'll now move to item number two, which is a presentation by Allison Pierce regarding a report on the 2014 Summer Night Lights program, not only here in Tulare but county-wide. Allison.
Good evening, supervisors, county council and staff. Allison Pierce, Board Representative. I'm here tonight to share with you how things went this summer and we'll just get going. So the goals for the show program was that there would be one night a week for those communities involved for four to six weeks, hold those events in their communities. They would be held at parks and community or youth centers and they would remain usually open between 6:00 and 11:00 PM. The events would target youth and their families and the sites would offer snacks, programming, and community resources, of course, if they'd be community-driven, and we had an additional goal this year to hold up to six free swim nights per community that has the capacity to hold those events. So the communities, there were 11 different sites, which they were Alphon, Allensworth in District 2, Color Rose See in District 4, Dinuba District 4, Early Mart District 2, Exeter and Ivanhoe District 1 and 4, Lindsay District 1, Porterville District 5, Tulare District 2, Visalia Districts 1, 3, and 4, and Woodlake District 4. So there was, there were indeed jobs created through summer employment, working with the Workforce Investment Board, Sea Set, Sea and Company, and Proteus. 16 youths were employed during the summer for a total of 1,734 and a half hours, making a total of $15,345.56, free give-in for high school students. So the events featured games, movies, music, prizes, sports, bounce houses, dances, resource spares, swimming, and water play, and they have fun county-wide. Now, if you can see that Supervisor Claxton, Claxton's standing with Aladdin and Jasmine. So I wanted to give a brief community report on the various communities throughout the county and how things went, and by the way, it went really well. So Alphon, Allensworth, this is their third year, they held six traditional Summer Night Lights events, they used the light of the bus once again, it was completely community-driven, and they collaborated with the community at Early Mart to provide a one-sweet swim night, one for Alphon and one for Allensworth to swim in their community and they took the bus into Early Mart, got to swim and have a good time. Those communities do not have access to a pool and it was a great experience to visit. So as you can see, their attendance, they did really good, especially considering their first year, they had 372 for six events. This year, they had 1,097. Now, there is a disclaimer, their final event will be this Thursday, so our numbers will go up a little bit based upon attendance. Color Rose See held six events and it was sponsored in joint by Color Rose See School District as well as the Christian Worship Center. This is a great partnership. Each took on three of the events, sponsored them, worked with the community, and it was a success. And you'll see, they had 1,280 attend through their program and as you can see, it was up from last year. Dinuba held six events, they integrated their 30th July event once again into their schedule and they kicked off a youth-based community farmer's market. So this is a great opportunity to leverage another event. So their attendance was 4,300 this year, which as you can see, they have that consistent incline over the years.
I expect another.
Early Mart was a newcomer this year and 600 did decide then attended the four events, which is a great considering they only had four events and this is the first time for them. So as word amount increases, they're excited about it and I believe they will be attending it next year. Exeter and Ivanhoe, they utilized the bus to transport youth from Ivanhoe to Boys and Girls Club in Exeter where they have lots of different events and games. I did have a video, but it for some reason isn't showing up and it would have been kids dancing to the cha-cha slide. 275 attended four separate events at the Exeter Boys and Girls Club. Lindsay is another newcomer to Summer Night Lights. They utilized the McDermott Fieldhouse and provided free swim nights. When they utilized McDermott, it was during their normal farmer's market time. Oftentimes, the city of Lindsay has stated they have a lot of youth that would just roam the streets, really not having anything to do, and this gave them a great, great opportunity to do something fun on those nights. A total of 12 nights were provided to youth through the swim nights and the McDermott nights and 4,055 attended these events. Porterville had six events and four swim nights this year and they connected Summer Night Lights with the overall Porterville step-up effort and they have been a participant for the last four years and the swim nights, as you can see, really bumped up their attendance, almost about 1,000 this year, so 2,666 this year. Tulare participated, they had four events with youths in the park. This year, it was a different model. The Boys and Girls Club typically acted on their own, having events at their center. However, they partnered with the city of Tulare and having those events in the park really up their attendance. As you can see, they more than doubled or close to doubled what they, what their normal attendance was, and their largest night being in Delgado Park, and so we're looking for it next year. Visalia held six events and six dive and movie nights and they have been a partner for four years and as you can see, the swim nights once again helped with attendance with 2,098 this year. Woodlake, once again, this is partnership with the city of Woodlake and they have 3,330 attend their events in their cities. So total overall attendance this year was 20,341 county-wide and it shows all of the communities there. And then with showing over central section, the attendance by numbers, as you can see, the first year being 2,235 and this last year being the 20,341, that's 71% increase over last year. So here's just a little pie chart to show you each community's slice of the pie. Dinuba, Lindsay, great first year, and then Porterville consistent, consistently doing well. So by supervisory district, to the left is the last year's slice of the pie by district and then this year, of course Supervisor Worthley's district, they love Summer Night Lights. However, I must say, Mr. Supervisor Sheedah, thanks to both these efforts, you have the most improved, you give the most improved award. So outcomes for this year, obviously, attendance exceeded our expectations. 77 separate events were held county-wide. The free swim and dive and movie nights were a success with 24% of total attendance being attributed to these events. It created 16 deaths for youth and reaching both incorporated and unincorporated communities. Once again, the communities who do not have a Parks and Rec department, who are relying on community partners, they are making a success of these programs. So the goals for next year, looking forward, we are looking for additional sites and of course expanding programming. We are already, Supervisor Vanderpoel, we're in talks with Tosh County, Xandy, and Pixley and Tipton, and then of course, the great opportunity of pool parties. As you can see, those were very well-attended. They would be at capacity most nights, like 280 people in the Porterville pool, 400 people in the pool at Lindsay. They are very much appreciated and utilized. And with that, that is my report. Any questions?
Supervisor.
Just a quick comment, you know, you can see that District 2, although we didn't get the best increase in participation award, we continue to expand the program here in this area. Tulare has been a participant, but more and more, we continue to grow the program and place it in better situations so that we can garner more attendance because it really is a benefit to all youth, whether in an unincorporated community or an incorporated city, just providing youth with an opportunity to participate in positive activities during the summer when there is little to no activity for them is really a great thing. And you did highlight, we are hoping to expand in both Pixley and Tipton next year as well as continue in Early Mart and Alphon, Allensworth, which both communities at the end of that list, Alphon and Allensworth and Early Mart, continue to grow in attendance as the program is established in existence and people know that it's coming each week or each month and the attendance continues to improve. So I think there's a lot to look forward to, a lot of opportunity for improvement and this is just a great program and a great resource that Tulare County provides to our residents. So thank you very much for all of your efforts.
Can you put up that last slide, Allison showing the partners?
Oh, my apologies.
There we go.
There's all our.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I'd just like to thank Donnie Moore and Heidi Grebel of Porterville for their big support through the Parks and Recreation Program there and that's what's made this so important.
Well, I can, if you look at the partners here, this was a huge collaboration, a lot of people participated. Our sheriff's department as well as every police department in the incorporated communities were very supportive, were very helpful. Our probation department allowed employees to flex time to participate in many of the community events and I know they had probation officers, several of the, at the events and were able to interact with the youth on a way other than they normally would interact with the youth. So a very successful program. We do look to grow the program again next year, slowly, maybe not by 70-plus percent because we do have limited resources, but Allison, good job. You know, we know you worked very hard on this, we know you worked with every one of these communities to make these happen. Thank you. We'll move to item number three, which is public comments. There is, on this podium where Allison was, there's three little lights, a green, a yellow, and a red light. When the three-minute clock starts for public comment, the light turns green. At one minute remaining, it will turn yellow and when the three minutes is expired, the red light will flash and there will be a loud noise and some kind of electrical shock I told. No, okay, there will be a noise, but no electrical shock. So we will open up to public comment. If you'd like to comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. And if you would like to, and we would, those folks that are here to comment on a public hearing, we do have Allison here and Melissa in the back that have public comment cards we would like you to fill out and we'll take those in the order that they're received by me. So anyone wishing to address the board now during public comment period on an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seen none. We, it is not quite yet 7:30, we'll move to our consent calendar. We have items five through 25. Item 14 is being polled by the district attorney and will be brought back at a different time. Are there any other items that need to be pulled by a board member?
Mr. Chair, I would like to remove item number 10 just for a brief comment by staff.
Okay, we'll have item number 10, we will take that under separate consideration. Anyone from the public wishing to pull a consent calendar item?
Mr. Chair, there's no one wishing to remove any consent calendar items. I would move for their approval.
Second?
Less items 10 and 14.
Okay, moved by Vanderpoel, seconded by Worthley, and we will have a, are we going to roll call vote? A roll call vote. Michelle.
Aye.
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 Okay, we'll now take up item number 10.
Mr. Chair, I just thought this item should be removed just to highlight for members of the public, the efforts of the county to continue to advocate on behalf of water. As we know, that is the lifeblood of our economy here in Tulare County.
Thank you, Supervisor Vanderpoel, Jim Russell, County Administrative Officer. Item 10 is a letter of opposition to Sacramento. Item ten is a letter of opposition to Sacramento opposing AB 793, which is a bill that's flowing through the legislature in part, among other things, create a, an underground valley conservancy, which we feel would be, which would be, have fifteen voting directors, representatives from each, each county in the valley. And we just think this is a, is an overreaction to the drought conditions that we're going through. What works up in the northern part of the valley certainly can't be applied across, across the board and that's our concern. Another layer of bureaucracy is something that we don't feel will be necessary to solve the problems that we have and that's why we, we put this on the agenda today to, to make a formal opposition to that effort. In addition, you know, this, this is, you know, goes along with the work that we were doing with the water workshop that we had last week, with the water, with some of the water districts in the county. And it's kind of a privilege to meet you next Monday with the Water Commission and the Admiral Advisory Committee because one of the actors that talked about it, me, was the two underground water legislation that's going through both the Assembly and the Senate. SB 1168, AB 7239. Our lobbyists via the governor's office sent out an email this morning asking for comments by the end of today and are trying to rush this through and want to make sure that we have a say in what shows up in the final reflection.
I know how. Supervisor Shida.
Mr. Chairman, yesterday afternoon, we had a meeting of the Disadvantaged Community Water Study, which is a two-million-dollar grant we received from the state of California to go over all our disadvantaged communities in the Tulare Basin and categorize them and list them and do everything we needed to do. And at that meeting, we had the pleasure of one of the regional water quality board members. And I think he agreed with me that every time we have a crisis in the state of California, the legislature and the governor jump on it without understanding the full ramifications of what they're doing without really thinking through the problem or how to fix the problem. So he agreed with me. Basically, he thinks that this bill is, this, this project is premature until we have a better understanding of base knowledge of groundwater and also what direction, what problem are we trying to solve before we start another agency? So that's my thought.
Mr. Chair, I'd move for approval of this item. Thank you for the separate consideration.
Second. Moved by Vanderpoel, seconded by Dennis. Roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you. We'll now move to our timed item, which is the continuous of our public hearing. Make a few comments. We have, we've, I've received two additional pieces of written correspondence, one from the Tulare County Citizens for Responsible Growth and one from Shirley Kirkpatrick. Anyone else has public comment forms that they'd like to submit? Again, Melissa in the back, Allison in the front. Supervisors Worthley and Ashida were provided with and did listen to the recording of last week's public hearing. So if you have a concern, that should sell your concern. They were able to listen to those. For your information, the applicants have requested and staff is going to recommend at the end of this time tonight to continue this item to Sept-20, or September 23rd at nine-thirty a.m. in the Board of Supervisors office. So the public hearing, it's intended that we will continue this item at the end of staff's presentation, your public comments to September 23rd at nine-thirty. So at this time, we will ask for staff to make their presentation.
Chairman Cox, Supervisors Aaron Bog, Chief Planner, RMA. Before you today is tentative tract map number TM 812, VSR R7 Enterprises, Dave Roberts. The press originally was subdivided two hundred twenty-five acres into a hundred sixty-two residential lots in ten phases, located, located on the west side of Millwood Road, one mile northwest of the city of Woodlake. The Planning Commission recommended denial of the mitigated negative declaration in FTM 812 with exceptions to the Board of Supervisors on March 26th, 2014. The board continued the matter to August 12th, 2014. We respectfully, RMA respectfully request continuation of this matter and given an opportunity to talk to all parties and to the community as well as that is our request by the, and this matter itself was requested by the applicant to be continued to September 23rd, 2014.
Any questions of staff? Thank you. Okay, the, the public hearing has been continued to tonight's date and time. I do have requests before me to speak to the board. If you would, please, if you have already sent written, if you've already sent written correspondence, please do not read that to us because we can read. If you have any new information that you would like to bring to the board tonight, we would like to hear that. Please do not repeat yourself. If you did speak during last week's pub, or the public hearing last week, so again, we're looking for new information that you might have and at this time, we will open up this public comment period. Each of you will have three minutes and I promise to slaughter your names because some of you have worse handwriting than mine. So I'm going to do my best and I'm going to read them off in the order that I receive them. We have Dan Monroe. Don, looks like an A to me.
That would be reverse order. I just filled that out.
Oh, it's on the top of my pile.
That's good. Good evening, Chairman Cox and Supervisors. My name is Don Monroe and I am on the steering committee of the Tulare County Citizens for Responsible Growth and we've been around for about ten years advocating for the conservation of research, resources, especially natural resources of Tulare County, have numerous projects. One of them is the most visible is on a, a website, Tulare County Treasures and its purpose is to familiarize the citizens of the county with some of the wonderful, um, natural and developed sites in Tulare County that can really be appreciated. We've also been working with the community in the Elderwood area where this project is, is located and, um, we find that they're just wonderful people and they have the same appreciation for their local environmental resources that we do. And we also appreciate the work of the staff of Tulare County, especially taking directions from the Planning Commission to, um, to encourage you to, um, require an environmental impact report for this project and also consider rezoning the project for, um, for agriculture, twenty to forty acre minimums. We just hope that you will take that recommendation and act on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Craig Bion.
Craig Bion, I work with Tulare County Citizens for Responsible Growth and the community here. I had a brief talk tonight and it started with, I think you were gonna, you're gonna make the right decision so I won't even argue the point. Now we see a continuance. You know, what that tells me, and I've been doing this work for twenty years, is that the project proponent realized he was gonna lose his vote and he's now decided that he'd like to negotiate with the community a little bit and with staff. He could have done that after the Planning Commission hearing easily when the Planning Commission told him that not only was his project inappropriate for this area, ill-timed, and his environmental document was poor at best. He did not do that. Now, you know, I think you should just go forward with your vote. I cost a lot less than most other attorneys because I work for nonprofits and small community groups, but they're still paying me money and you're costing them money by continuing this. I would almost say that if you're gonna do it, make it a condition that Mr. Roberts has to pay my fees between now and then. I don't want to overcharge people. You know, it's a bad process. Sorry.
Next, we have Robert Piercy.
I too will start off by saying that I am very disappointed you continued this till September, but nevertheless. My name is Robert Piercy. We have property of three-five-zero-two-eight Millwood Drive in Woodlake, very close to this development. For nearly thirty-five years, I've worked in education, an agriculture teacher with Visaya Unified Schools, with College of Sequoias, with Visaya Adult School, and then finally with the Woodlake Unified School District. In those thirty-five years, I taught vocational agriculture. I was very familiar with agriculture, the use of water, the growing of crops and livestock and agribusiness. I feel that my background allows me to be, to voice some real concerns regarding this development. Since March, three hundred people in the vicinity of the development have signed a petition. You have most of the names already in your folder and are given, will be given tonight in the list of the additional names for that. Three hundred people have signed a petition stating their concerns regarding this development. It should not be necessary tonight for any of us to repeat the real issue here, but it's already been said by you folks many, many times already and that's water. It's on the forefront of everybody's mind, water. Who's got it? Who can use it? How much is there? All we're asking you, the supervisors, tonight is to put yourself in our position, the homeowners. How would you like to live across the street? If you're a Derriman, how would you like to have that development across the street with a hundred and sixty-two sites? Each night, you could look up on the hill and see the lights. Each day, you would see traffic coming and going on the roads. Each one of those sites would have anywhere from one to three dogs, half a dozen cats, pets, livestock. The wildlife in there would be affected. I don't think you'd like it any more than we would. I would certainly agree with the proposal. This site would be a beautiful site to live, but it's the wrong place to put it. There are too many open sites within Visaya, Exeter, and Woodlake to build elsewhere. A local well driller says that a two-family, a two-person family with a minimum of yard space and livestock and pets will consume about seven to eight hundred gallons a minute. Last week, or two weeks ago, we were told that about four hundred seventy gallons be used by a homeowner. That's way, way off. Seven to eight hundred gallons. If you go up to Badger Hill and make a comparison there, the homeowners there use three thousand gallons a day per site. That'd be a half a million such gallons of water for this development if that was a comparison to Badger Hill. At our last Board of Supervisors meeting, it was stated that no appreciable water loss would be made and yet wells in the area have gone down. Bear with me for about five seconds. We have already mentioned the vast amount of water waste in the area. You've heard that earlier over from us. Just consider the effects of this development. It's the wrong place. It doesn't need to be built there. It affects the farmers, it affects the water and we just ask you to simply make a vote, take a stand. Don't continue it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piercy. Bob Phelps, Jr.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. I'm here to comment basically on the right to farm. My wife Cindy is here with me this evening. She and I are two children and their families have a small family farming operation with various locations, Ivanhoe, Woodlake, and Elderwood. We grow citrus, walnuts, and grapes. When I first became aware of the proposed project, I got very concerned immediately, wondering how easily will we be able to continue to farm in the area with a project as large as what's been proposed? I've also been an ag consultant for thirty-eight years with Leffingwell and in the course of that time, I've worked with various growers and I can tell you that when you try to farm next to an urban environment, it gets very difficult. Products that you might typically use somewhere else are not available. People are concerned when you bring in harvesting equipment, your sternup dust. It, it becomes a real issue. It makes life very difficult. You've heard a lot of the, the aspects already, but the ones that concerned me, water. I farm right there in that area. Very, very tough time with water. That's a bad water area. I can foresee that once they start the project, if they don't have enough water, they're gonna drill more wells, deeper wells, and that's gonna rot the adjoining areas. Traffic. In nineteen seventy, when I worked on Millwood Drive there with my father-in-law, six cars would pass in a day, six. Now, same location, six cars passed in one minute. And you can imagine additional traffic with a hundred and sixty-two home sites there. And I can tell you that is a very unsafe highway. No shoulders, especially around the corner there from that proposed development. And of course, then lastly, when you have that many people, they're gonna be migrating through your, through your operation, children and such, and it's, it's not a good situation. I've known Dave Roberts since nineteen eighty and I've known him to be a hard-working guy, a very likable fellow and I'm really kind of disappointed to have to stand here and oppose the project, but I really believe it's the wrong place for that kind of a project. And you gentlemen are charged with being stewards for Tulare County. I think one of Tulare County's big issues is the right to farm. I think we just basically took over the number one location in the United States as a ag-producing area and I hope you gentlemen would help us continue to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Chris Robles.
Good evening. My name is Chris Robles and I'm a resident of Woodlake. My address is thirty-four-eight-five-zero Millwood Drive. I have a block of oranges that I farm at this address and I have two irrigation wells. My background is construction and construction equipment. I have over fifteen years of experience dealing with underground water systems, including clean and wastewater test wells. Tonight, I would like to bring up, bring some clarity to the statement that Roberts Engineering and the developer, Mr. Roberts, made at our last meeting on the twenty-ninth. Roberts Engineering stated there was adequate water in Colton Mountain for the Colton Mountain development site based. A lot of his bases were outdated and inaccurate. I have data that I would like to share with you. The data was gathered this week and promises to be the most current available. CASGEM is the California State Groundwater Elevation Monitoring System. We happen to be fairly lucky that there are two wells next to the proposed project. There's one well that is one point two miles and the second well is two miles as the crow flies from the proposed service well for Colton Mountain. Both wells are being monitored and show substantial groundwater loss since two thousand and two. CASGEM, which is the California State Groundwater Elevation Monitoring System, shows that in two thousand and two, the two wells, you could touch the water at forty-nine feet and twenty-one feet. These are wells twenty-one B and ten B. Today's current water levels at twenty-one B and ten B are much as forty percent lower with water depths of fifty-two feet and seventy-two feet. A comparison for this time last year shows both wells both dropped ten feet, an elevation of forty-two and sixty-two feet. It is my belief that the data shows that we all, what we already know. The area cannot support any more water. The area cannot support any more water usage, especially one hundred and sixty-two homes. I'd like to say that I know Mr. Roberts has been trying to sell this project for a while, and I don't know that the three hundred folks that signed that petition, and I hope you folks don't either, are buying, buying what he's selling on, on what he's proposing with the entire project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have a second request here from Don Monroe. I'm going to assume that's a duplication. Anybody else wishing to address the board this time? If you would, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
The Lake Mar request.
That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, for this opportunity. The lawyer couldn't be farther from the truth, because I volunteered with all these people, all our neighbors, to meet with them anytime. I've asked to join in on their meetings. I've told them we want to be a good neighbor. We've always been a good neighbor. We've done nothing in secret. We've been working with your agency, the RMA, for over eight years, and have gone into the RMA office many times. And if you look on the wall, there's your zoning map, and if anybody wants to know what the potential is for their neighbor, for their neighborhood, it's right there on the wall. There's no secret to it. The zoning was put on this property in the seventies. We bought it in the eighties with the idea of doing this when the timing was right. We've been working at it for eight years with your staff, meeting all their requirements. We've hired licensed people that the, that the state recognizes, and then all our neighbors know better than every licensed personnel that takes a test and does everything. I don't quite get that. If water's the issue, our neighbors would want it in houses, because we will use about one-eighth of the water that we do growing trees. And I can assure my neighbors that if we get pushed, we are planted, we are planted now to about one hundred and thirty acres. We will plant that other hundred acres, and we will drill the wells needed to feed that hundred acres. I would think our neighbors would like this. With a, as a community, needs a project like this to get it jump-started, to get, I've talked to the merchants. You're welcome to go talk to the merchants. They would like a project like this. Look at how Exeter thrives. Look at how Woodlake suffers. Go to the restaurants in the evening. Look for yourselves. Go to the grocery store. This community needs this sort of development. And I'm not really a pro-development guy, but look at what Woodlake needs. Woodlake is a beautiful community with great people, but it needs a stronger economic base, and this could be a tremendous jumpstart for that. Thank you for your consideration.
For the record, that was David Roberts, 39237, Run 172.
Sorry about that.
That's fine. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Remember that we will, it is our intention to continue this item one last time. Seeing none, we're not going to close the public hearing, but we'll bring it back to the board for action and comment. Aaron, where'd you go? You want to come back up, please?
Yes, Chairman Cox.
Any discussion from the board this time? Seeing none, then we will entertain a motion for action.
Motion to continue matter to September 23rd at nine, nine-thirty time item, I mean, ten o'clock time.
Second.
A motion by Worthley, a second by Ashida. Roll call vote.
Aye.
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 No.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries with a four to one. Cox voting no. We'll now move to our untimed items. Item number twenty-six is a request from our CAO in regards to the California Board of State and Community Corrections. Mr. Hess.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Dill, Mr. Captain. My name is John Hess with the County Municipal Office. The request before you is to authorize two letters to be sent to the California Board of State and Community Corrections. As you are aware, we submitted an application of forty million dollars for the construction of a three-hundred-and-eighty-eight jail facility at Sequoia Field. Last year, we were awarded the entire amount and met all the thresholds criteria. Subsequently, a fellow county petitions, and they were successful in their petition, and our award was reduced by about six and a half million dollars. And so, we are now at a thirty-three million dollar award. We, in April, the board met and considered either moving forward with the amount of money or seeking additional amount. We postponed a formal decision at that time, and so the letter this morning is to take a formal action and request that money that was relinquished by another county, a small county, Tahama County, which is about ninety-nine point seven percent of the amount of money that we need to complete our project, be directed toward this project at the September eleventh board meeting of the BSCC, the Board of State and Community Corrections. And secondarily, if the Board of State and Community Corrections decides that they don't want to give that money, or they decide to give it to a different county, or they give us a lesser amount, then we would accept the formal amount of tentative award that we were due in March of thirty-three point three million dollars. So with that, we have a taken question.
Any questions?
Oh, just a quick comment. I think this is, it makes a lot of sense for the county to do this. Obviously, if we're not granted this request, we're going to scale the project to the amount of money that we've received. We know that we have a need, but we are not going to put ourselves in a dire financial situation to make this happen. There's a definite need here in Tulare County for this facility, and hopefully the state will recognize that and grant us the money that we were granted but had it taken away from us.
Any other comments?
Just a quick comment. I think this is the appropriate thing for us to be doing. Mr. Cox and I were touring the facility the other day that's out there. This is really a twofer, because not only do we need these facilities, but we have a lot of dilapidated structures out there, infrastructure, which is absolutely, well, it's World War II vintage. That's why it was there, as a training center for pilots. And so, we will have an opportunity to really rid ourselves of what is dilapidated structures and then build these new structures, which are desperately needed by the sheriff's office, and make a better use of the property that we have out there. So I, I, I think it's appropriate. We don't want to lose the thirty-three million dollars. I think that's the key thing here. We're asking for the extra money. I don't know why they wouldn't give it to us. I mean, the reason it was taken away from us was not because of our project. In fact, we had the largest distribution of the formula that was given to our counties our size at the time. The only reason we lost the funding was because of the lawsuit filed by, or the action brought by Stanislaw County, where it was reconsidered, and then they had to go back and, and redistribute the funds. That's when we lost the six million dollars. So if these funds cannot be used by Tahama County, I don't know why they wouldn't come back to us, but whether they do or they don't, we will move forward with the money we have.
Any other comments? Questions? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr.?
Second.
Motion by Worthley, second by Vanderpool. Roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you, John. Okay, we'll now take up our next and last item on tonight's agenda, item number twenty-seven, a historic day for many people in the room. And one of the largest, I would say, this is the largest IT purchase I think I've seen come to this board.
Mr. Chairman, just to make a comment, this is a historic day, and many of the folks in this room who are champions of this item are also pieces of history. I'll just add. That was directed at Mr. Hill.
Say, Mr. Hill, we were not talking about you. Turn up your hearing aid. I've lost control. Peg, you want to bring us back?
I will bring you back. I am Peg Yates, Director of Tulare County Information Communication Technology Department, Chairman of the Board, Board Members, CAO, Tony Council. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk to you about our request to replace the current property information management system with a new application called Amentum. This presentation is a joint effort of the Assessor, a Depositor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, NTCICT. It is a result of years of research and planning to move the county forward in the property tax management and is designed to cover a lot of territory. The next slide will show a list of topics in that territory. As you see, we have quite a list to cover, but none could be left off without also leaving out important information that has shaped our process and decision points. I know our time is short and the list is long, but please feel free to interrupt us as the presentation moves forward if you have any questions or need further clarification about what we present or on the information in your packet. First, we wanted to present the goals of the project. We believe that the highest priority of this project is to better serve the public, and our decisions are all predicated on whether the decision will lead to a better experience for the taxpayers of the county. Every other goal listed here supports our main objective. These goals are reflected in the careful approach we have used in evaluating alternatives, planning project milestones, and estimating costs. To discuss the details of the Amentum project, we first need to review some history with current property information management system. Our current system, known as PIMS, has served the people of Tulare County for more than twenty years. The information and processes impacts every constituent, and we depend on it for a wide range of processes, calculations, and reports. To frame its age for you, please consider that when PIMS was installed, the Internet had only just been invented, and the first computer virus had not yet been released. The difference between the world then and ours illustrates the difference between what the system was designed to do and what we must ask it to do today. Adapting the system beyond its original design introduces some risks, which we will show on the next slide. The most obvious issue with PIMS is that it cannot be changed enough to meet current needs. Over the years, it has been customized and tweaked to meet the needs until we have reached a point where new changes often break the existing system. In addition, because PIMS cannot be changed to meet all of the demands of two decades of laws, court rulings, and interpretations, many processes happen outside the system. These processes involve multiple databases, spreadsheets, and duplicate data entry. Manual processes mean more staff and more chances to introduce errors in the data that survived than moves from PIMS through the workarounds and then back into PIMS again. Those issues are severe, but the highest risk is that we went on the technical side. Let's take a look at this. PIMS requires a very expensive technology, nearly one million dollars a year. Today, mainframes are mostly used by banks, insurance companies, and telecom companies to manage enormous amounts of information. Though our mainframe is dramatically underutilized, PIMS cannot be moved to another system. Then there is the issue of computer language used to create PIMS and finding people with those language skills. We have not found programming, we have not found programmers with UFO skills, and I just said UFO, even in IT staffing companies. Our first PIMS programmer retired last March, a second May follow in November. The PIMS risks both were a customer service and use of laws, technical risks, required that we explore options to replace one of the county's most critical applications. We have performed an extensive analysis of the needs of the county in managing property information and commercial applications available to meet those needs. Listed out some resections that were covered in the analysis. We involved many people, and we looked at PIMS and many systems, as many systems as we could find. No single system could meet every need without a change, but we are confident we have found a viable solution in Thomas Roder's application known as Amentum. We want to share with you some of the reasons we believe Amentum is the best decision for the county and its constituents. Amentum is an application that is certified to meet all California property laws. It is created in self-contained functional models, but designed to be integrated and used with the modules you choose. This project will purchase and implement the three modules represented on the screen. Because the application is created to address specific department functions, I would like to introduce Roland Hill and Rita Woodruff to speak about the benefits to their respective departments. It is my pleasure to introduce Roland Hill, Tulare County Assessor, Court Reformer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hill, before you start, we want to know if you've hidden Sasquatch somewhere in your presentation.
No Sasquatch, no jackalopes.
We're disappointed.
No prepared, we've got a slide here, but I mean, the main thing is Rita and I are here because we have a system that is nearly as old as Mr. Vanderpool. But we didn't get it when it was new. We got it third-hand by way of San Luis County via Kings County. It's free in the public domain. It's done its job. It's worked, and it could continue to work, but so does a pen and paper or a pen and pencil. It's where at a point in time we have to make a change. You've heard it costs nearly a million dollars a year just to, you know, take care of the mainframe. And so, we know that this is a very large expenditure. We're encouraged that you are considering it. We recommend that you do so, and I don't want to be presumptuous, but I thank you for taking the steps to do this, because we need it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm sure glad I took my chance when I had the mic in front of me.
Rita Woodruff, County Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, and I can't talk him. I gave up a long time ago. But he's right, and so is Peg. PIMS did do a good job, and especially for us in the auditor's side, it's done a good job for us. And Amentum, we'll have the auditor's side step back a little bit, but in order for the assessor to jump forward quite a bit, it's worth it, because if he doesn't assess, we can't send out bills, and we can't collect, and we can't give you the money. So it's really important, this is emphasis to be given on this new system. For us in the tax director's office, just to look up who paid a bill right now, we have to go to six different programs to look it up. Takes a lot of time. Amentum, it'll be one or two. To take in the money between the banks and the mortgage companies and everything else is terrible to persist, and this will be all combined in that. One thing about getting in on the kind of the ground floor of a program is that when it's not what you think the law should be, you have a say in how they fix it and program it. So we're looking forward to that for the auditor's side of it tonight. And we appreciate the work that Peg and her group has done on scouting out all of the other systems and picking us, and she's done a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roland and Rita. Now I have to catch up. They didn't put my pages over. So we have framed for you the reasons we need to leave PIMS and the reasons we believe Amentum is the best choice. But there's cost to doing business and a cost to change the way we do business. We have provided in your packet the summary budget estimate and contracts that lay out the scope of work and milestones of the implementation segment of the project. We can now look at the bigger picture. Yep, that's a lot of money, and I'm well aware of that. But we believe it is the real cost of replacing an obsolete system with one design that's supported by Thomas Roder's, a company committed to the accuracy, functionality, and longevity of their system. The system implementation is planned in twenty-four months. The changes from paper to automated workflows, shared data, revised processing time, and work culture in the departments using Amentum are expected to take the entire six and a half years of the project's life. Let's take a closer look, starting with the cash investment. The graph breaks out the fifteen million dollars by how the money may be spent. Note that the red wedge shows a minimal contingency fund, which will be returned if not required. The cost of Amentum's contracts on software and hardware to run the new system, but the majority of costs will be the investment in county staff working on the project. Some staff will only work a few days or hours on the project. Others will be assigned full-time to Amentum for years of work. Let's start with that group to discuss the budget. This very busy slide shows some of the job descriptions for people involved in the project. Color showing roles and size showing project, projected time commitments. Amentum needs all the data currently in PIMS, all the small databases, and spreadsheets. In addition, we will develop requirements for the interfaces to other systems, for example, the financial system APEN or Interpalms. At the same time, we are documenting workflows, coding interfaces, and working on many tasks that are needed to support. that are needed to support the implementation of Amentum. Without the commitment of staff time, there can be no Amentum implementation. Even with staff time, we also need Thomas Reuters' services that come with the signing of this agreement. You can see that the total cost of Amentum contract is daunting, but it does include the optional eGov solution and maintenance. Also of note, all payments are based on 14 milestones, each with clearly defined criteria. Each milestone must be formally agreed to by the county by signing the milestone delivery acceptance statement. It is for this reason we are requesting the board designate the assessor and auditor assigned for the successful completion of each milestone. You can also see that the contract has requirements for vendor travel and county caused delays to the approval process. Let's take a look at the milestone payments. Here's the list of the 14 milestones, and as you see, the payment amounts vary. For example, the lowest payment amount is tied to training, where we will be billed for what we use. The highest payment amount will be received after go-live, and the second highest for the final acceptance of implementation. This very high level view covers thousands of hours of work and hundreds of contract details. The contract has been approved by county council, and there is a project team in place to begin the work as soon as agreements are signed and funds are available.
If I can, Peg, if I can interrupt you right there. Typically, contracts, you have your final payment would be a retention of 10%. It's looks like it's, you know, maybe 8% or so. Is there a reason why we didn't, you know, go by like a standard contract retention?
Alicia, would you like to come up and help me out with this one? Alicia did a lot of the contract negotiations rather than presuming. Any answer, I'm going to defer.
So this was a negotiated amount then and not a standard amount that we set? Okay. Thank you. That answers it. Thank you.
This is the basic county structure that will be used to manage the Amentum project. The executive steering committee is a final decision body for issues, for changes in scope, additional costs, or policies. The county project manager will be Alicia Beale, an experienced project manager who will lead the overall effort to implement Amentum and modernize the business process around property information management. She will work with staff from the assessor, auditor, tax collector, TCICT, and Thomas Reuters to complete the activity and task that will make this a successful implementation. The project is estimated to last six and a half years. Let's look at some significant dates. About two months after signing the contract, county staff will begin addressing the INGC here. What you cannot see is that each of these items can take weeks or months to complete. The more we accomplish prior to project kickoff, the more smoothly we can expect the project to begin. This will get us to the first quarter of 2016. Here are some high-level events, including the system go-live scheduled for August 2017. It is important to note that the application will be in and working, but the county work to take full advantage of the Amentum capabilities and to integrate those capabilities with our other technologies will fill the rest of the project time. I know this is a lot to consider, and here's a summary. The staff of our combined departments have considered many options to better serve the constituents of Tulare County while reducing the risk to the county's critical income processes. We strongly believe that Amentum's project is in the county's best interest and is the best choice for us. We respectfully ask that you honor our request as listed on the agenda item and give us your support in this effort. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Come on, surprise Worthley.
And I do have someone here from Thomas Reuters, if you want to speak to them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, this is my 16th year on the board, and this conversation was going on when I came on the board 16 years ago about a concern about this particular program and its aging capacity. We were joking that we have these folks on contract to come back and continue to keep the system operational alive while we go through this process, and I was joking of you coming down in wheelchairs to come down and work on things, and you said somebody's in their 70s now, I think. One of the, to me, this is a marvelous turn of events because I know that this problem's been ongoing, but the difficulty's been finding a vendor. And we know of counties that have spent many tens of millions of dollars in failed efforts to accomplish what this is going to do. And so, you know, the challenge was keeping the old system bandaged together and operating long enough to come up with something that could take its place and we wouldn't be jeopardizing or risking all these funds. And so I'm just elated that we're at that point here today. I'm kind of sad to think I might be out of office before this goes live, but nonetheless, I know it, you know, all good things take time, and Roland Hill's even, you know, older than I am, so. I don't think he is, actually. He's just licksled. But anyway, I thank you for bringing this. Appreciate all the hard work that you have done and your staff, and so many people have been engaged in this project, I know, even to this point. And now the real work begins. But a lot of work had to go on ahead of time to get to this point tonight, and I for one want to thank you for all that effort.
Mr. Pfizer, Ashida.
I remember when Phil Cox and I were elected to the board, that this program's been an issue, and we've only been here for 10 years. But the one thing I, my hands off to our IT department, that we didn't jump in and buy one of those other programs that Supervisor Worthley mentioned that cost probably hundreds of millions of dollars that counties have spent in getting a non-functional program. So through your diligence and through all these years we've been waiting for this, it looks like we finally have a viable alternative which would definitely affect the productivity of our personnel. So I'm enthusiastically looking forward to this change because we've made a lot of IT changes in all our other departments, and we're starting to reap the rewards of those changes. So I'm glad it's here. Took a long time, but I'm all for moving forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Well, I got to commend you guys too for making this thing work so many years, I mean, and just kind of patching this thing up and keep going. So got to commend you on that, and you've done a great job because I don't get a lot of calls on tax problems like I did the first few years I was on the board. So you've made this thing work, but we're looking forward to this new process, and hopefully the true winners is going to be the people here in Tulare County. So thanks so much for bringing this forward, and I'm backing it 100%.
Mr. Russo, you had a comment?
Yeah. Junior Russo, County Administrative Officer, just wanted to congratulate Peg and your staff, Rita, and the old guy sitting next to you for suffering through this. You know, we've been talking about this for over 10 years. Supervisor Worthley, since he's been on the board, and I'm glad to be finally at this point to pull the trigger. You know, this continues from my perspective. It continues in counties, first class, that break our systems. We started to replace our public safety systems, all four, and did a great job. In fact, we, you know, we do a lot of trying and fighting for one of the few counties, if not the only county in the state to do that. So you have a lot to be proud of with, in partnership with this department. Our new permit system is going to be go-live here in early October or in the next several months, and I'm really looking forward to that system too. That is going to, you know, it's going to improve customer service in the permit area, the enforcement, the whole nine yards. It's going to take us to a level that we've not seen in this county, including our GIS capabilities, which is pretty sorely needed in this property system. Then after this comes our new cable system in a few years when we're ready to actually get that going. So congratulations. I'm glad to see Alicia on this project. She is a tremendous project manager. She worked on a probation project, did an outstanding job, and changed the way they do business, and I expect the same with this project too. And then lastly, for full disclosure, I was going to let the city managers know Thursday morning at 7:00. Why we need it 7:00 in the morning still being on. But, you know, we're going to run this through our tax administration process, and we just went through that, you know, the whole, the problem with the triple flip and came to an agreement. So we, I wanted to let you folks know that you're going to be picking up a piece of that as part of those fees, and it'll be spread out, you know, get your fair share. But just want to let you know ahead of time. We'll try to come up with some type of ballpark estimate. If you want to know, you can call Ms. Woodard, and she'll work up some numbers. But just give you, just give you a heads up that, you know, we all, we all, we all need a property system that, you know, does accurate assessments and then the ultimate calculation so we can distribute to schools, county, the cities in the area. And again, since the schools can't pick up their share, you, you know, the cities pick up a small piece of special districts too, and then the county itself will pick up probably 14 million or so. So anyway, congratulations. I look forward to this project going live and that's all you said.
Great evening. Peg, thank you. We'll bring them back to the board for action.
Move, move. Second.
By Ennis, second by Ashida. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Okay, the vote is unanimous, and that concludes our meeting for this evening. I'd like to thank those that came out to the City of Tulare tonight. Thank again the City of Tulare for allowing us to use their wonderful, now I'll call them new, board chambers. They're probably not that new, but very nice. Thank you again, and we are adjourned.